Now on the way. So with that, we will begin with the high school completion program. I know Assistant Principal Dwight Hall is here. Tarad Dobbins, please.
He's not here, so I'm sorry.
Okay, are you pinch hitting tonight?
No.
Okay. But thank you very much for being here. Springfield Conservatory of the Arts. I know Principal David Brewster is here. Megan Rivera and Katia Vasquez, please come on down. Is it Katia or Katia, please?
Uh, just Kat.
Oh, Kat. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and other school committee members. We're so thankful to be able to speak to you today on behalf of the Springfield Conservatory of the Arts. My name is Megan Rivera and this is Kat Vasquez.
Both Megan and I are active participants in SCOTUS drama program. Recently, we auditioned for an upcoming paid theater production called Emily and Will in the Garden directed by our extremely talented drama teacher Amanda Jacoby. It will premiere Friday, no, it will premiere at the Emily Dickinson House in Amherst on May 28th. All members of the school committee are invited to join us for this special night.
This past Monday, the cast was announced and we along with six other students were chosen.
I was cast as Cleopatra in a Shakespearean medley of his most famous work and I'll be performing Cleopatra's death scene.
And I was cast as Lady Macbeth in a scene, in the scene in which she is persuading her husband to kill King Duncan and take his crown.
We have to memorize the original scripts as written by the bard for our big scenes.
And we'll also play supporting parts in Midsummer Night's Dream. We'll also be working with professional actors, which is honored within itself. For me, acting is something I am extremely passionate about and have wanted to do for years. Having this opportunity is something I am very grateful for and it brings me just one step closer to my goals. I recently transferred from Putnam High School and immediately felt the love and support from every student and teacher in this school. I feel like I can succeed here and that is a feeling that became born to me for quite some time. I really hope SCOTUS future will continue to be supported by the committee so that the school can continue to prosper.
SCOTUS and its students continue to learn and grow every day. When I first found out about an opportunity to get paid for something that I love to do, it was hard to like just stay in my seat and not jump for joy. SCOTUS has opened the doors for me to believe that I can do anything even if the world tells me that it's unrealistic and that I can't. And I look forward to my next two years at SCOTUS and the things that I'll be able to do there. Our drama program has expanded so much and we posted our own play night, we've had script writing units, we've studied our monologues in depth and many other things.
So this is a good start, but I have big plans for my future. I intend to apply to schools for film and television because my biggest dream is to appear on the silver screen.
I'm more of a theater actress and I plan on throughout and after high school to continue to audition for as many parts as I can find and maybe someday will transition to film acting.
We are honored to be a part of the school and thank you guys so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, very nicely done ladies, thank you. I'll have to practice my Shakespeare, "To Be or Not to Be" on that. You're not doing any Shakespeare, Bard, you're doing that, okay. That line didn't go over too well, so I'll end that there. Thank you.
Try to deliver.
Yeah, deliver, exactly. It's been a long day and a long week, but nice job ladies. Putnam Vocational Technical Academy is in the house. Vice Principal Jennifer McQuade is here. Ali Bello, come on down, Ali. I love that name.
Good evening Superintendent Warwick, Mayor Sarno, and all school committee members. My name is Ali Bello. I am a senior representing Putnam Vocational Technical Academy. I am very glad to be here to update you on events and activities that have been taking place at Putnam since our last presentation. Senior Tusi Ng was chosen as outstanding vocational technical student of the year from Putnam. She was honored and recognized at the Outstanding Vocational Technical Student, excuse me, Student Award Dinner that was held at Mechanics Hall in Worcester on April 14th. Tusi was one of 52 outstanding students recognized that evening, one from each vocational school in the state. In addition, Tusi has been notified that she is a national semifinalist selected for the first ever President Obama Career Vocational Technical Award. She will know later this spring if she qualifies to go to Washington DC in June to meet the President at the White House. Senior Isaiah Bermudas was just awarded one of the two Jesse Park Scholarships at Springfield College. This scholarship is a full four-year scholarship based on academic success and community involvement. We had also just heard that today at 4:30 Kayla Hernandez is the recipient of the William Beckett Scholarship, a scholarship given to one Springfield student who aspires to become a teacher. This scholarship is a full scholarship to Springfield College based on a partnership between Springfield Public Schools at Springfield College. The ashes-to-ashes ceremony was held at Putnam on April 11th. The sheet metal department and the carpentry departments worked in collaboration with the members of the community and the St. John's congregation to honor the memory of those individuals who were lunched between 1800 and 1950. Currently, Putnam has over 100 juniors and seniors participating in the cooperative education. The students on co-op get paid during their time on shop week and their salaries range between $10 and $15 per hour. This afternoon, 60 Putnam students were, went to Blackstone Valley to compete and participate in the state, at the State Skills USA competition. Hopefully, they return home on Sunday with plenty of bronze, silver, and gold medals. The allied health students, including myself, have taken their CNA exams over the past few weeks. Many have passed and have already been hired in the field.
That comes from the nurse of the school committee.
The CNA pinning ceremony will be held on Tuesday, May 31st. On Friday, May 6th, we will host the third annual Say Yes to the Dress Prom Event from 3 to 5. This event provides all young women in Springfield an opportunity to get free dresses and accessories for prom, class day, and other special occasions. This event has been a huge success in the past and we are looking forward to this year's event, which I have also previously was in. Sports update. The winter sports season is over and the results were excellent. Boys basketball won the Western Mass Championship for the fourth year in a row. Four of the boys' basketball players made all Western Mass, two boys made All States, and two girls made Western Mass. The wrestling team had also, has had an also outstanding season finishing second in the Valley League in an overall record of 17 to 2. Tahoe Hudgens is a sophomore and earned a first-team recognition. The spring season is well underway and we are looking forward to another successful season. I will be leaving on June 7th, the day after graduation, to serve our country and the United States Air Force. My goal is eventually to be, to work as a trauma surgeon in the Air Force. I was recently honored by the Frederick Harris staff and students with a scholarship and honor in memory of our hometown hero, Gunnery Sergeant Thomas Sullivan. I am thankful for my experience at Putnam and know that I am well-prepared to reach my goals and dreams. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bello, nice job. Springfield Central High School and Mr. Central Principal Tokars is here and our very own Baok Kim, the student representative of the school committee will be speaking. Baok?
Good evening.
Good evening, Baok.
My name is Baok Kim. As you may know, I often sit on that chair over there as the senior representative, but today I will be up here representing my school, Central High School. Tonight, I will present the buzz on what's been going on in Central recently. Central's musical, Chicago, has showings on the 7th, the 8th, and the 9th of April and we were astonished by how amazing and talented our many actors were. We sold under a little 1,000 tickets and we're quite proud of them. This musical is very important to Central because our beloved drama teacher and play director, Mr. Michael Cremonini, will be retiring after this year. And while we are sad to see him leave, we were more than happy to give him a spectacular musical he deserves to have been a part of before he leaves. While we're on the topic of singing and dancing, Central is having its annual cabaret night tomorrow. Their students will showcase their talents such as singing and dancing, so please come watch and have a good time. In sports, Central is very excited to say that the boys' volleyball team is currently undefeated and their winning streak is eight and zero right now. We're very happy for their wins and are ecstatic that they are getting a lot closer to Western Mass. The Thursday before our spring break, we had our National Honor Society induction. We inducted about 30 to 40 new sophomores. This induction was also very emotional because we would be losing another faculty member after this year. Mrs. Lois Hedberg will be retiring and while we're also sad to see her go, she has said that this year's induction was the best induction she's ever planned and me being the vice president of NHS, I felt very proud of myself and I will miss her after this year. Central has been redesigning its courtyard in the atrium. It will be complete this weekend. The new courtyard will allow for future gardening and outside classrooms and I think it looks really nice. There are some important dates coming up for each individual class in Central. Freshmen and sophomores are gearing up for their MCASs this year. This year, the freshmen will be embarking on a perilous journey to take the physics MCAS and the sophomores will be conditioned and ready to take the math MCAS. Good luck to them when the time comes. Juniors are getting ready to take their SATs this spring. We wish them the best of luck as they get farther and farther in the college process. Our juniors and seniors will be having a lot of fun and hopefully not pulling a lot of all-nighters as they gear up for the AP exams. We have 329 students that will be taking the AP exams starting May 2nd and that will go on for the next two weeks. Central is administering 595 AP exams in 20 different subjects. After AP exams, the seniors will have to battle their senioritis for just a little longer as they brace themselves for their finals. Then afterward, they can have a relaxing senior picnic at Brownstone on May 24th, have their senior prom on the 27th, spend their last day in high school on June 3rd for class day where we get all of our rewards and spend our last day in Central and high school in general. And then say goodbye to a big chapter of their lives and get ready for an even bigger one when they graduate on June 8th. I am delighted to say that 430 seniors will be on that stage that day grabbing their diplomas. I love my class and I'm proud of how hard we pulled through these four years and I know that in the end, it'll definitely be worth it. And as a senior myself, it's really been quite, quite a blast and it's been hitting me and I've come to terms with the fact that high school has gone by insanely fast. It's quite a bittersweet feeling, but everything has got to come to an end at some point and that's okay because next year I will be enrolling in Clark University pursuing a biology pre-med major. And I hope that I can, I can keep it up. And I'd like to say thank you for your time and although I don't believe this is the last meeting, I would just like to personally thank the school committee for allowing me to be sitting on that chair this year. It's been quite the honor and I'm really glad that you guys gave me that honor.
We thank you, Baok, very much and you have that voice and delivery of a newscaster too. You hit that? So bio, you never know. Thank you. You felt the same way too. Okay, the High School of Commerce is in the house. I know Principal Diane Bauer is here. Tyreek Brown, come on, Tyreek.
Hello, everyone.
How you doing, Tyreek?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Good.
That's good. Well, my name is Tyreek, as you said, and I am a young, growing in education, African-American man that loves and attends the High School of Commerce. When I think about the High School of Commerce, I think about the well-written story of Cinderella. It is looked on by the sisters as she is like so poor and she's dressed in rags and she is tortured with words that are just really harmful to her character as she is as a person. But then you have people that help her realize her real potential and get her to where she needs to be. She gets her to the ball to where her, her view is, by society, is changed. You know, she is changed into the beautiful princess that she is in the inside and that's how I feel about same thing as commerce. I feel like with the mice, I feel like the mice in the story of Cinderella represents the students that even though they might slip up sometimes, they still come together so that they can get Cinderella to where they need to be. The teachers, it's just like the fairy godmother, they help us with these tests, they help us get, dress her up and even when things look like they're not working, they bring it together to make the system of commerce, the name of commerce into the beautiful Cinderella to get her to her ball. Altogether, we work together and we able to make things happen like the RISE program where students are turned into mentors and experts in resolving conflict instead of turning to other people for help, we're able to go to each other. And we are able to host things like blood drive where students take their time out to go and to donate blood that they have for those that are out there. We're also having the JROTC Ceremony Awards and that's for all those, you know, because we have an amazing JROTC team. And our boys' baseball team, they have, they are five and two with five wins and two losses. And then we also have the IB program, which I am in. I am a full IB candidate and the IB really encourages students to use their, use the knowledge that they have, just not for school, but also for your community and to go out there and to help. We're at Commerce, we are encouraged to go out and for one example, we was taken to go and to go teach elementary school, teach kids. We went from kindergarten to second graders and we was there teaching them how to be better within their family and how to help out within the community and how to just be a better person in general, how to save their money. We also tell them about the importance of education. So at Commerce, we're very encouraged to do, to go outside of the school walls and to do what's best for the community as a whole. And that's where IB really makes an impact on your life because not also, you're also taught for your educational means, but you're taught and prepared for life as a whole. And you're taught for college and that you're, it's really hard and we're able to expand on our knowledge just beyond what's on, you know, the curriculum. We're there and we're going deeper into, into what we can know and we're exploring more things, worldviews instead of just an American view. So I stand here representing Commerce and saying that it resembles hope to me. It resembles that even though that we've had a bad name for so long, that there is still a chance and that there's still a hope that Cinderella can still make it to their ball.
Great job, Tyreek. Nice job, Tyreek. High School and Science Technologies in the house. I know Principal Dr. Walsh is here. Sarah Tanya Mary Nieves, please come on down. Ms. Nieves, how are you?
I'm good, how about you?
Good, thank you.
And you guys? Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, school committee members, and fellow city residents. My name is Tanya Mary Nieves and I am currently a junior at the High School of Science and Technology. I am originally from Bayam, Puerto Rico, and I've been living here in Springfield for seven years. I am excited and a little nervous to be here today to invite you to the High School of Science and Technology's 7th Annual International Fair tomorrow evening. The International Fair is a celebration of the cultural diversity represented at our school and in our city. The High School of Science and Technology has multicultural students from all over the world that speak more than 10 different languages and make up 40% of the HST population. In addition, we have many students who study foreign language and culture and we're hoping to continue to expand this program by adding Arabic to our school's curriculum next year. The International Fair is a chance to share and highlight the students and families of our city's multicultural community. At our event tomorrow evening, we will be, there will be speeches, performances, foods, exhibits, and costumes displaying more than 30 cultures. This event is important because we will showcase the diversity of our nation, specifically those represented in our cities and our schools. Taking the time to celebrate cultural differences shows us that in respecting our similarities and using our differences to expand our strength, we better prepare our students to become the successful college career and military citizens that are required in the 21st century world. In a time of such war and conflict, it is important that our community set a standard for respect and appreciation and we at the High School of Science and Technology will continue to model this respect and appreciation as well as invite the community to continue to be a part of this and to continue to show their constant and generous support in all that we strive for. Thank you for your time and we hope to see you tomorrow. And also I have personal invitations for each and one of you for tomorrow at the fair.
Thank you, Ms. Nieves, thank you, dear. Nice job. Last but not least, the high school completion program is in the house and Assistant Principal Darryl Hall is here, but Tarad Dobbins is here. Come on down, Tarad. Assistant Principal Dwight Hall.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, ladies and gentlemen of the school committee, friends and family. First, thank you for this opportunity to speak to, speak to you on behalf of the high school completion program. I have many positive things to say about the high school completion program, so I will first start off by saying how I came to be enrolled in this program. I was a dropout from Central High School. I didn't want to be in school at first. While I was going to Central, something about the atmosphere, atmosphere of the school I just didn't like about it. Not only was I not motivated to finish school, I just wanted to stay home and play video games all day. I had and still have big goals, I just needed to strive to complete high school. After I lost my first job, I tried getting another job, but it didn't work out because I had no diploma to back it up so I can, you know, continue to move on with my life and get experience. So it seems all, all jobs nowadays require a high school diploma to work anywhere, so the decision to finish my education was obvious. First, I went to see how I would go about getting my GED until I received a phone call from my counselor, Mrs. Burgos, saying how I could finish high school and still get my high school diploma. My first thought when she had said that I could get my high school diploma was a, a high school degree sounds a lot better than a GED. So I came for a scheduled visit to check out the school and see how things worked there. I liked the counselors, the teachers, and the atmosphere of the school, especially how it was flexible, which is very unusual for a school today. Ever since I started attending this school, I've really enjoyed it. I met up with a few of my old friends and made a few new ones. I like going to this school more than I like going to Central. I had a lot of support and motivation from my counselors and my friends I had made within the school. It made, it was just up to me to get my work done. I feel like nothing can really hold me back anymore. With all the struggles in my life, well, at least now I can say I went from being a dropout to having my high school degree, you know what I mean?
Nice job, Tarad, nice job, nice job. Thank you very much. That concludes our high school representatives meeting portion of this meeting. You're more than welcome to stay. If you'd like to leave, we'll take a one-minute recess and then we'll go into our regularly scheduled meeting. One-minute recess. We'll call the meeting to order. For the record, school committee man attorney Peter Murphy is unable to attend, he's under the weather, we hope he's feeling better. Madam clerk, could you please call the roll? Present. May we all please rise for a moment of silence and then to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We're going to move to see quickly to approve the minutes of the April 7th, 2016 regular school committee meeting. Any comments or questions? Motion by Vice Chair Collins or second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Roll call, excuse me, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. With the indulgence of the school committee, we have some great awards for the Pioneer Valley Teachers Excellence Awards and we're going to go immediately to recognize those hard-working teachers with the indulgence of the school committee. And again, this is to recognize 27 Springfield Public School teachers receiving the Pioneer Valley Teachers of Excellence Awards. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. These were formerly called the Grin Spoon Awards and everyone knew them as the Grin Spoon Awards, but now they're Pioneer Valley Teachers of Excellence Awards. The way it works is there's a teacher for every thousand students, so there's only a few awards, it's a select group, and it's people with top ratings in their field and a great recommendation, so it's a high honor. And again, we'd like to call up the 27 winners from Springfield this year. I got to visit them in their classrooms, it was a great pleasure. And I think too often in education, we don't recognize the people who really go above and beyond the call and this is an opportunity to do that, so I'm thrilled that we have this opportunity and looking forward to the ceremony.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick. And I believe the first honoree is from my old elementary school, White Street Elementary School, Alyssa Gurney. Come on down. Ms. Gurney?
Yep.
Is that, is that we have?
Yep.
Is that in order?
What sheet do you have?
I don't have.
No.
All right, take it back.
Kathleen Ives at Bolin, Kathleen Ives at Bolin.
Take it on, that's okay. False alarm, but you still get it.
You're still going to get yours though.
Wait a minute, we're going to go, we're going to reverse, we're going to reverse, hold on, we're going to reverse. Bolin, Kathleen Ives, come on down.
Principal Bukowski.
Yep, Principal Bukowski is here.
Congratulations, thank you for your service.
Alyssa.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Kathleen, congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations to them. We'll see you, I believe, next week. Thank you, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations, thank you for all you two.
Bold Schools in the house, Kathleen Karen and August Suarez, please come on down, congratulations.
Principal McCann.
And Principal McCann, all of the students from McCann. Principal McCann, the great hair Mike Cassandra, Frederick Harris, so congratulations to you and thank you very much. Do you have another one?
Congratulations.
Okay. Don't go anywhere. Stay right there.
Good.
Congratulations. That's funny.
Thank you so much. Congratulations and thank you for all you two.
Just to let you know, the award is, how appropriate, too, an apple. No, not a real apple. Okay. Okay. Though that would be healthy, too. Central's in the house, as we know, Principal Tad Tokars is here, Drew Forbes, Erica Slozek, Bridget Ward, congratulations, come on down.
Me first, I'm the last, congratulations, thank you, congratulations for all you two.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more that's not, taking, you know, kids lobster.
Lobster?
Yeah, so she's a little later.
Okay, I got her. Congratulations.
Well, why don't you come up and get her?
Yeah. And bring a lobster up here for the thing, will you? Not for me, but for her. I'm not a fish person.
Congratulations and thank you for all you two.
Thanks, Tad, thank you. Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, Brookings is in the house, yeah. How could I miss Brookings? I know Principal Terry Poe is here, we're going to be planting a tree tomorrow, matter of fact, for Arbor Day. Joseph Trevissano, come on down. You thought I forgot you, Joe, huh? How could I do that, Joe?
Congratulations, thank you for all you two.
Thank you so much, congratulations.
I'm really proud of it. Yes, it was, I was impressed. I would have put your name.
Congratulations. My alma mater, the High School of Commerce, is in the house, I know Principal Bauer's here. Adam Cattori, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and Dietris, is it Dietris or Beatris? Dietris Johnson? My alma mater, the High School of Commerce is in the house, I know Principal Bauer's here, Adam Cottori, Diet, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and Dietris, is it Dietris or Beatrice, Dietris Johnson? Come on down.
Congratulations, thank you for all you two.
Adam, how do you? Cottori, I was close there. Thank you so much, appreciate that. Congratulations. Thank you, dear. Congratulations to you too, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you and congratulations.
The Berry is in the house, Sarah Carrington, I don't know if Principal Rochella, oh, Principal Rochella is here. How are the kids?
Congratulations, thank you, congratulations, thank you for your contribution.
Thank you, congratulations to you, thank you. District ILS Kathleen Scott, Rosa Valentin, come on down, congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you for your work.
Miss Valentin, congratulations, thank you very much, dear, thank you. Dorment is in the house, Deborah Kane, congratulations. And Ron, Assistant Principal Lewis back there.
Congratulations, thank you for all you do.
Congratulations.
And we're going to, we're going to try to see Jimmy next week, too, on retirement there. Congratulations, thank you. Try to pop by.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Representing Doug and his Vice Principal Matt Sullivan and Eric Loosen, Loosen that? No, are you serious? Boy, I lucked out on that one.
Congratulations, thank you.
Oh, man.
Congratulations.
Please, I'm going to correct you. Thank you so much, congratulations. Wait, wait, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Hey, you're a good pinch hitter tonight, man, way to go.
Congratulations, thank you.
The Hoopster himself is here, my old junior high, Kylie Middle School, Drew Johnson, Morgan Tobin, Kara Vickaliyevi, correct me, come on down, congratulations.
Thank you for all you do. Congratulations.
Okay, who's, who's missing? Who's missing?
Congratulations.
Okay, so Miss Vickaliyevi's not here. Which one is that?
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, wait a minute, okay, I apologize. Yes, okay. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, congratulations. Milton Bradley is in the house, and Luce Rivera, and Madam Principal here, too. Principal Hughes.
Congratulations, thank you.
These are heavy, too. Thank you very much, congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Rebecca Johnson is in the house, Desiree Spencer, come on down. Principal Milner Garcia is here.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Love that hair, you look great, congratulations. Thank you. SciTech is in the house, Doctor, Principal Dr. Walsh is here, Latisha Boils, Grace Harris, Colleen Peterson, come on down.
Thank you, congratulations. Congratulations, thank you for all you do.
Latisha, congratulations, thank you very much. Grace Peterson, thank you very much, congratulations. Excuse me, congratulations, Dr. Boils. Stem Middle is in the house, Desiree Spingler, if I say that, congratulations, please, Dr. Moore.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations to you two.
Congratulations.
Principal Lawson, too. I didn't see, okay. Warner School Jennifer Stevens, not here, okay, we still congratulate her, okay.
Yes.
White Street School, my old grammar school, that's, I think, Kristen Hughes, double, doubleheader here, Alyssa Gurney, Donna Sousa, Brianna Cicero, come on down. And she's a first, Brianna Cicero is a first-year teacher, how do you like that?
Congratulations. Congratulations, thank you.
Alyssa, congratulations, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very, very much, appreciate it. First year hitting the other park, where you going? Thank you so much, congratulations.
Hand slam.
Congratulations.
That's it, is that, are we in? Warner wasn't, no, Warner wasn't here, they told me. Congratulations to you all, thank you.
Special thanks to Sumajka and Nancy Kavanaugh, retiree and former Grin Spoon winner.
I didn't see Nancy.
Was here helping us all year on this, thank you for a great job.
Superintendent. Julie Jaren.
Julie Jaren, yes, Julie, yep, yep.
Julie Jaren.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now go back to the agenda, Section 2, this is items requiring the vote of the school committee. A is to approve the J.F., John F. Kennedy Middle School Students' Travel to Boston on May 26, 2016, returning after 10:00 p.m. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor, there's a form in your packet recommending approval.
Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hurst, seconded by Ms. Gresham, roll call vote is required, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden, absent, is present.
Yes.
Yes, Morse's official vote, it's matter passes, thank you very much. B is a vote to approve the naming of the track at Springfield Central High School after Howard P. Drew, Superintendent Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a special honor for me, you know, Howard P. Drew is a real hero from Springfield, participated in the 1912 Olympics, at that time was rated as the fastest man in the world. Also had a, a long and excellent career, serving as a judge and I believe a chief justice in the Supreme Court in Connecticut, so had exemplary life. We have the opportunity to name the track at Central in his honor, I think it was a great suggestion, a team from the Park Department and former School Department employees who came forward with this. We did a poll, the results are in your packet, but you could see there was really significant support from 80 to 96.7% of the different constituencies. You know, obviously someone that we didn't know a lot about and we should have before this, but the information came forward, I think it's a great opportunity for us to recognize him and I think it would be great, we're talking about having a formal ceremony on the All-City Track Day, because he actually was a graduate of Central High School.
Yeah.
And participated in the All-City Track meet back in the early 1900s, so I think a great honor, and we'll get you information on that, but I recommend approval.
I, Superintendent Warwick, special moment, well-deserved, Coach Larry Lebo, our Athletic Director Mike Martin, we started bringing back the Mayor's Cup and was lucky to be able to award some of our, our track specialists at Central, so this is well-deserved, an exemplary career that he had, and again, was, as Superintendent Warwick indicated, the fastest man in the world, then went on to become not only excelling in track and field, became a judge. So I think this is very, very appropriate as we honor our, our history and our heritage. Any other questions or comments? Vice Chair Collins?
He was the first black or African-American judge in the state of Connecticut.
That's right, that was another first, that's right, that's right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hurst, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham, roll call vote is required, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Morse's official vote, it's matter passes, and we're very happy about that, thank you. C is a vote to approve the rain garden at Springfield Renaissance High School, Superintendent Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor. This vote came through our Subcommittee, our Building and Ground Subcommittee, but it's a proposal that the principal endorses, it's grant-funded, and it's putting a rain garden for outside use at Renaissance, it had widespread support, and came through the Subcommittee, I'm recommending approval. Chris, did you want to comment on it as the Chair of that committee?
Vice Chair Collins?
It's just nice to see us starting to do some ecologically friendly alternatives to handle roof run-off. And it becomes a laboratory. So I'm very strongly supporting.
The roaches are here. The roaches like it very, very much, yeah. Very good.
I think you need to put a snake there right there.
That's not under our domain, we're not going there. Any other questions or comments on this issue? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez, roll call vote is required, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden, absent, is present.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden, absent, is present.
Yes.
Yes.
Morse's official vote, it's matter passes, thank you very much. D is to approve a budget transfer from General Funds Reserve for contingency account to the school committee legal account in the amount of $75,000. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, thank you, this request has become necessary because of the increased services dealing with the DOJ, you know, issues that we've been dealing with, providing a lot of information, so came through our Subcommittee, it came through Budget and Finance, I recommend approval. Chris, I don't know if you want to comment on it.
Questions or comments, Vice Chair?
Unfortunately, it's necessary.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Collins, roll call vote is required, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Morse's official vote, it's matter passes, thank you very much. E is to approve the acceptance of a donation of a 2011 Ford Focus for Putnam Vocational Technical Academy Auto Body Shop, and again, police motor sales continues to give, Mike, I know he looks down upon heaven on us. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, you're right, Mayor, they've, they've been a great partner for us, and again, I'd like, I recommend we accept the donation, and this also came through Subcommittee, I think it came through Finance, I don't know if Chris wants to comment.
Questions or comments?
It came through Finance, I'm very supportive, I just, I often wonder when they donate something to the auto body shop, and after the students have had a chance to really, really to put it back in the shape, what do they do, go out and crash it again so they can next school can get at it again?
I hadn't thought about it that way.
Little twist of that.
I could do some research on that.
And, thank you, Vice Chair Collins, any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hurst, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez, roll call vote is required, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Morse's official vote, it's matter passes, thank you very much. We'll now move to reports of standing committees, A is student relation parent concerns?
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B is Building and Maintenance Committee?
We've been on the two items.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. C is Legislative and Contracts Committee, Dr. McFadden, absent. D is Curriculum and Programs Committee?
No report at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. E is the Budget and Finance Committee, Vice Chair Collins?
We've been very busy, but we're, the budget is at the point where it's been presented for the full school committee and will be voted on on the 5th, I believe, is the date?
May 5th, next, next Thursday, yes. Any questions or comments on Vice Chair Collins' report? Okay, hearing none, is F is Vocational Education Committee?
Not reported, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. G is Technology Committee?
That's Murphy, I think.
Okay, Peter, again, is under the weather, Attorney Murphy. H is School Safety Committee?
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Report to the Superintendent, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor, there's some information in your packet, it's a good news story, in two pieces of information, it's the arrest comparison going back through the years, this would be student arrests in the different schools, as you can see, if you trace it back to 2010, 2011, there were 356 student arrests, this year, we're 65% from last year, and at 54 student arrests. So I think this is a credit to the staff in the schools and the wonderful help we've had from our Quebec team in dealing with incidents in a proactive manner. We've also set up a situation where if it's a minor arrest, the kids don't have to go to court, they can do a little work on a Saturday in a, in a DLA program, so, and a lot of things on this, we've made tremendous progress and bought the arrest down for a city our size to be way down to 54. I thought it's a credit to the Springfield Police Department and to our staff out in the schools, so I wanted to share it with you.
If I may, too, of the relationships that continue to be built and strengthened between our brave and dedicated men and women in blue and our students has been tremendous, and the statistics show an extreme decrease, and that is the last resort, and even before the last resort, diversion programs are put into place. So that's quite a testament to the, the school system and quite a testament to the collaboration with our Springfield Police Department.
Yeah, and you know, I, I think you, you hit the nail on the head, Mayor, I think the, the best thing about this program is the wonderful relationships that our kids develop with police officers, so they know they're there to serve, serve them, and, and I think those relationships will bode well for the future. So it's been a very positive program, and I just wanted to bring that forward, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions in the Superintendent's report? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Superintendent Warwick, we'll move to unfinished business. Say again, unfinished business. Okay, hearing none, we'll move to new business. I'd just like to point out, we, we want to, we're going to officially congratulate with Tyne Malone, who won the LaHovik Award for Putnam Vocational Technical Academy as the top basketball player Division I in Western Massachusetts, unfortunately he's unable to be here tonight, Superintendent Warwick's informed me we'll be honoring him in an upcoming meeting.
Right.
But tremendous squad, the young men there have done not only well on the court, but off the court, so Tyne, congratulations on prestigious LaHovik Award moving forward.
Part of four straight Western Mass champions, so, one of the two times probably in history, right? And two state champions this year at that time, so, rather incredible.
Many a times Superintendent Warwick and Vice Chair Collins and myself were at the games and even the state games there, too. So we look forward to honoring him. Any other new business at all? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hurst, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you for watching and good evening.